Notice is hereby given of a special meeting of the Friendswood City Council to be held on Monday, August 12, 2019 at 7:00 PM at Friendswood City Hall. Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, to discuss the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call the meeting to order, ask Pastor Mike Ross to come up and bless us, and then following him, we'll have Cub Scouts Joseph and Vincent Ford with PAC 452, Mary Queen, lead us in the pledge. Pledge is...
Let's pause for a moment, please. Holy Lord, we thank you for the blessings that we enjoy in this community and pray for your continued presence to guide us and to bless us. This evening, we pray for special blessings on our leaders. We lift up our mayor and our council and our city manager and all the civic leaders in our community that volunteer to make this a rich experience to live here in Friendswood. So we pray you'll continue to bless these people and we pray that they will serve always with openness and with integrity. And we pray, Lord, for the gift of the support of our community to always stand with our leaders, to walk alongside them, to demonstrate a spirit of cooperation, a spirit of goodwill. We pray, Lord, that we'll always nurture our pride in our community, but also an attitude of gratitude for the gifts that we enjoy. So we're before you this evening, thanking you for your presence and praying for this spirit of community to continue to grow. We're before you with these blessings and our requests in the name of Christ. We pray. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, and indivisible.
Yeah, good job. Thanks, Pastor. Item four, communication from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. All right. Emora? Where are you, Brady?
Houston, we have a problem. Forty million dollars won't solve Friendswood's flooding problems. I don't think $200 million will solve it if it's not spent wisely. And knocking down trees and digging holes in the earth and generally just throwing dirt around won't solve the problem. The problem is the city of Houston is upstream from us and they've developed about 20,000 acres in my lifetime. But I think the watershed moment came in '79 when Claudette moved through. And I think that was probably about the time 288 got finished. I'm not sure. Do you know that a freeway displaces a river? So when Beltway 8 got built, all hope was lost, really. Flooding is here to stay. It's not going to get better. It's here, it's going to get worse. We adapt or we get a boat. So this building down here, and I know you all seen the new house going up on 528 on stilts. That guy's smart. That's the new norm, okay? So if you want to spend your money wisely, I think those buyouts are a good idea. And also, and in favor of elevating houses. You know, they elevated the entire city of Galveston when they were wiped out. So we can do that. We can elevate these houses. You know, building in a floodplain is not smart in the first place. So if we stop building out and start building up, at least make people build a two-story house where they have someplace to live upstairs while they're rebuilding the downstairs. I don't know how much time you've got and how much money, but if you could start restoring some native grasslands in the upper watershed, that'd be a good use of money. I think that'd be wise. So, you know, destroying every living organism is not the answer. You will devastate the habitat here. There's 450 species of birds that call Clear Creek home, and I do too. And I'm just, I'm tired of being scared and I'm just downright mad now. So I hope that you all will give this consideration and know that there are answers, but channelization are just catchphrases and terracing and sloping. That's just catchphrases for habitat destruction. And it'll all be just as submerged in a 12-foot tidal surge. So that creek will run backwards. It has for a thousand years. I don't know how old the creek is. Some people say it's millions of years. Some people say that it's the Old Brazos River bottom, valley, or mouth. But I think it's worth fighting for. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ross.
Thanks. Yes, real briefly. First of all, hopefully a compliment. I just want to offer thanks for you to say that, with gratitude for your service to our community and how you lead. And I'm very thankful for that and glad to call Friendswood home. And I think much of it is because of the leadership we have here. And then a little bit of whining. I recently had surgery and part of my recovery was to walk. And so I was walking in the neighborhood. And the more I walked, the more trash I found. And I actually started carrying little bag, little trash bags with me, but I couldn't keep up with it. It's too much. And I thought, where's this coming from? Well, I think some of it's just carelessness, you know, street curb carelessness. I think another part of it is the carelessness of waste connection. Those guys work very hard. They also work very fast. And when they spill, it's not their spill. So I think that's another part of the problem. And I think we need to find a way to hold them more accountable to their efficiency, if you will, on the work, the hard work that they do. And then I'm assuming the rest of it comes from Oklahoma, just the winds blowing it in. And I don't know if we can write a letter to the governor and say, quit messing with Friendswood. Might be worthwhile. But anyway, I graduated from walking the street to walking in Stevenson Park. What a gem that is for our community. And it just is another, serves as another reminder how grateful I am for, you know, your staff, upkeep and providing, and it's a great venue for us. I've reached out to Keep Friendswood Beautiful. And one of the suggestions that we touched on was maybe a coordination with the city and the Keep Friendswood Beautiful, some catchy, attractive flyer that goes in our utility bill that just reminds people to do a little curbside policing and encourage more of that, just a little. Because I don't think you see a lot of this trash if you're in your car. If you get out there and you walk around the neighborhood, it's everywhere. And it's just kind of discouraging. And there may be some simple steps we could take to help improve that. Anyway, thanks for your time with all of that and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Mike. Phil Radaso.
Mayor, council, thank you. I'm here to say that the citizens of Friendswood want drainage fixed along Clear Creek. I think we all know that and they want it done correctly. They want it done right. And they want you to know that funds, that you are given the authority when a bond is passed, you have the authority to expend funds. Funds not expended or funds not borrowed and funds not, that have to be paid back by the taxpayers. So they want the appropriate amount of money, not too much, not too little. They don't want the history of Friendswood to be that we underfund projects. They want it done right. They want a proper amount there. And to remember that we do have partners that will be there with us along this journey as we move into trying to get this drainage problem solved. And these partners, when they pitch in money, that's money that we don't have to spend. But if something happens and they can't put the money in, we still have to do it. Otherwise, the project is subject to failure and we can't afford failure and ruin the reputation of our beautiful little city and impact the citizens of this, the homes that have flooded and the other impacts it does to this community. Lots of psychological things. Just keep that in mind and please help the citizens and solve this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Ron Jenkins.
Ron Jenkins, live over in Quakers Landing. I was on the cat specifically what you labeled as drainage. At one of our early meetings, city manager, city council representative, I asked a question, how committed is this town to passing this bond and sending the project through? Both those representatives said, we're all for it. We wouldn't be here if we weren't. Before that was a word settled, they both told me, well, it's not our responsibility. We don't have to do this. If anybody's ever told me something like that before, it meant, I ain't going to do this. It ain't my job. Okay. We're not responsible. Okay. Legally, I agree with you. You're not. But take that excuse. What's your responsibility for a swimming pool? What's your responsibility for a shelter? Fix flooding, maybe you don't need a shelter. I had a resident yesterday ask me if there's going to be a boat dock on that shelter. He suggested it might be a good idea. Okay? Another excuse. Why should people who didn't flood pay for ones, help the ones that did? Okay? Why should us that aren't going to use the pool or anything else pay for those? Your excuses don't hold water. And why are all the excuses and negative talk aimed at drainage? Huh? The cat has been treated like the enemy from day one. We were handed a number and said, don't change it. That was written in the frickin' instructions. We dared to change it. Why? Because we thought the same criteria that that 32 came up with was lacking. Okay? I'm not here to browbeat or just be against anything y'all proposed and voted on already. The citizens want it fine and dandy. I'm all for it, okay? But don't shortchange drainage by God. If you do, leaders don't make excuses. Leaders don't accept excuses. I've learned that in private life. I've learned that in business life. I've learned that being a business owner. Stand up, do what's needed to be done, get this done so this town will lose the reputation of being flood-prone. You can't possibly guarantee there will never be another flood. I know that. None of us control nature. That's God's decision. But we can do what we can and I highly suggest you do it.
Thanks, Ron. Ron Lovely.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak once again. The input from the citizen advisory team for drainage was not mentioned last week. Some of you were upset with what they reported, but the omissions found were obvious. Ignoring the omissions was not an option for anybody. We're dealing with lives and property. Today, your job is to set a limit on a loan amount sufficient to give the city of Friendswood a fighting chance to win a 75% federal partner share. Set it too low, you take away our fighting chance. Set it realistically and the voters get to choose. The overwhelming sentiment of the public who have spoken here has been to caution against underfunding. The federal partner will price the project. They will not just give you the money. Red flags will kill it. If the limit on your loan amount is not 25% of the total project, then you did not meet the first requirement. They will look at inflation. They will use at least a 3% rate. If it doesn't add up, you can't do the project. The $41 million that you voted on last week has only 2%. Do not take a chance. The federal partner will use the HCFCD pricing database since it tracks the industry standards across 20-plus watersheds. They will use the same $8 a yard as Robert's Friend charges for dirt removal, $2 for erosion control infrastructure, and $3 for GNA since that is what contractors charge, HCFCD. Contractors will charge us that too. They will check on moving sewer, gas, and oil lines to see if you estimated those separately since contingency does not cover that. Then they will add 30% contingency based on experience per the HCFCD pricing standards. If your plan is to excavate on private properties, you're dead on arrival. They will add it up and see that the total is well over $200 million, just like the citizen advisory team did. It wasn't rocket science. I guarantee it. It was easy to analyze those numbers. Easy. If they see that the limit on your line of credit is insufficient, you can't do the project. To do it right, the project takes about $6 a month for the average household and that is after the project gets finished about 15 years from now. It is cheap to do it right. That covers a project that costs up to $224 million. That is reality. You're not eligible without 25%. That sets the bond at $56 million. Do not take a chance with lives and property. Make a safe place for everyone in our city to send their runoff. Listen to our citizens. Get rid of all the red flags. Do not underfund. Use the real number and let the voters decide. Give our city a fighting chance. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Connie Radaso.
First of all, I want to thank city council members. I do appreciate the difficulty of your positions and the hard decisions that you have to make on the behalf of Friendswood citizens. In 2017, Phil and I were part of a PAC, Citizens for CCISD, who asked the taxpayers to question the bond for $487 million, which passed at the ballot box. This wasn't because we don't think we should be responsible for taking care of our schools and in city infrastructure. We do. It was because we feel it should be done responsibly and as physically conservative as possible. One of the things that we learned during this process is it's very hard to beat a bond. That's when we decided, if you wanted to influence a bond, you don't wait until it's words on the ballot. The drainage team was told at the beginning not to redo the work of the Drainage Subcommittee. A council member told us here in this room not to fight the decisions of the council. As taxpayer-paying citizens, it's everyone's right and duty to question any bond. The Subcommittee's numbers of $32 million never added up. Even after you remove the de-snagging and raising of the bridges, you have to consider the missing GNA, cost of relocation of utilities, inflation over 15 years, and our 25%. You're assuming private property owners will let you terrace their land. And since you won't consider designing from the beginning as a park where trees are not all cut down but left to hold the dirt in place, you then have to add large rock called riprap, which has gone from $30 a ton to over $100 a ton since Harvey. Whether future parkland or a bald ditch, it still has to be mowed, either by the city or one of the flood control districts. Even though $41 million amended last week is not enough, I could certainly live with that more than I could $35 million. It's simple math and a whole bunch of unknowns. The Drainage Subcommittee planned modeled to save X number of homes by X number of feet or inches. Please don't use these numbers to promote the drainage bond. The estimates for funding this proposal were flawed from the beginning and that is why the Drainage CAT has been fighting so hard to get the bond proposition numbers higher. It is not because we want more debt. I do believe we will get or may get Harris County Flood Control District to partner with us. I'm not sure about the others. Russ Poppy shared with me last Friday, updated studies show that you get between $4 and $6 back in avoided damages for every $1 invested in flood risk reduction projects. While $34, $41, or $56 million is nothing to scoff at and doesn't seem very conservative, the savings from future damage, along with our local 25% being matched by 75% from other state or federal funds, means this may be the best bang for our buck that Friendswood has ever had. Please help me support this bond.
Thank you, Connie. Linda Jenkins.
Thank you for letting me speak again. Responsibility, it's a big word, important word. City leaders and staff have continually reminded the citizen advisory team and the citizens of Friendswood that the city has no responsibility to fix the forever ongoing Clear Creek drainage issue. We've got it, so no need to remind us again tonight. However, we could argue a little bit with that. You know, whose responsibility is it to keep six-foot-plus feet of water out of our streets in any given flood event? No one seems to want to be accountable for that. But shouldn't the citizens expect and trust their leaders to fight for their safety and security, especially after years of catastrophic flooding? Has city leadership been actively and consistently lobbying on behalf of Friendswood to the government entities that are responsible for Clear Creek? Evidently, that has not taken place in the past. How many flood events and how many millions in personal losses to people is it going to take until we stand up and say enough is enough? And how much longer till a leader steps up to demand action from the responsible parties, whoever they are, whoever is responsible for Clear Creek? According to the city, all responsibility has obviously caused harm to the people of Friendswood over the years. But now it's time to correct that and we applaud the city for being willing to propose a bond for drainage. However, by ignoring and disparaging the data and numbers suggested by the citizen advisory team on drainage, which leadership appointed, is not being fair and open to citizens. Choosing to disregard vital dollar amounts for such things as GNA, total number of buyouts needed, et cetera, for completion, a successful completion of the Clear Creek Drainage Project is again not being fair and transparent. Hopefully, you will consider not lowballing the bond amount so people in Friendswood can have some peace of mind and know that leadership is committed to actively pursuing all avenues to fix Clear Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Sarah Van Riper.
Good evening. We, the CAT team that was on drainage, we're pleading with you to be great leaders for this city. You know, don't blame the Galveston County Flood Control District for not fixing our flooding disasters or say it's not our job. You know, it's not our city to have to deal with this. It is our problem. You know, don't wait on another city like League City to design Friendswood's drainage. We need to do it ourselves. Don't underfund the bond. We've heard that over and over and over again. So that our chances of winning grant money will be lost to other cities that have the proper funding. You know, there's not that much government money to go around, so it's going to go to the cities that have ponied up the proper amount of money. And I'm suggesting that we use that Rice University engineering model of our creek to further develop this drainage project. You know, these engineers that developed it were certified hydrology engineers. So don't throw this work out the window. And why pay League City to do their drainage study? How do you think that's going to work out for us? The priority of League City will be for League City. So take that Rice University drainage study and build on it because it's almost, we're almost there. If we go with League City and chip in money there, they've already said it'll take a year and a half just to get the results. So that's going to slow down our project, waste money, and it's not going to be putting our interests first. So include in wording in the November drainage bond ballot that states that the terracing will be designed as Mother Nature would have it done. No clear cutting like we've seen happening over there at Imperial Estates. No concrete. No cutting down old growth native trees, 100-year-old oaks. No, don't do that. No just straight-line pipes. If we don't put clear language into the proposition, it could be voted down because we don't want an ugly drainage ditch like Houston has. This is exactly why the last attempt at a drainage bond was a no vote because it was going to be a straight, ugly Houston drainage pipe. Also, the proposed bond language includes dredging. The city has no intention of ever dredging, so please take the wording of dredging out of that bond ballot. In summary, to get a yes drainage vote, I hope you award the ballot to include designing the terraces like Mother Nature and remove all references to dredging. Provide the voters with a clear vision of what you think this terracing will look like. Thank you for listening to the citizens' concerns.
Thank you, Sarah. Dale Lovely.
Tonight, I'm not sure I know what to say. The bond for flood mitigation weighs really heavily on me. You've heard from the Subcommittee that there are possible solutions to catastrophic flooding from Clear Creek. You've seen the research and the results of the modeling from Rice University, which shows there are solutions. You've heard from the citizen advisory team on Clear Creek Drainage that the cost numbers from the Subcommittee just don't add up. As a member of that team, which included two members of the Subcommittee, I will say we took the work of the Subcommittee... I will say we took the work of the Subcommittee and fact-checked the costs. We asked questions of the leadership of the Subcommittee. We asked questions of GCCDD and HCFCD. I learned what those were. And we learned more. As requested by leadership of the Subcommittee, we did not re-engineer any of the work already done by them. We sought to be certain that if a bond were to be put in front of the voters, it would be a bond which could lead to minimized flooding in a large multi-day storm like Harvey, Claudette, and others. We worked hard to determine if there were gaps or extras in the cost numbers put forth by the Subcommittee. We found extras. The raising of bridges would do little to mitigate flooding, for example. And we found gaps. Those gaps have been brought to your attention over and over again in meetings, through emails, and via other communications. Gaps like contingency, inflation, and cost increases over long-term projects. Yet of all the potential bonds brought forth from the various CAT teams, only the drainage one has been cut over and over and over again. It has been difficult to see items and dollars added to other bonds while watching the varied attacks, distortions, and distractions diminish the amount of the drainage bond from the very first meeting we had. I find it disheartening to hear the adage, "Not everyone flooded," which is accepted as a reason to not fix flooding. Yet no one says, "Not everyone swims, so we shouldn't put money to a pool." In fact, you added to the pool a water park. The last census in Friendswood showed fewer than 44 percent of the families have children under the age of 18, the most likely users for the water park. But it's still in that bond to be funded. I am heartbroken to hear you say Clear Creek Drainage and Flood Mitigation is not your responsibility. No one expects you to get out a shovel and fix it or for Friendswood to try to do this alone. But I thought you would be taking active roles in getting others involved. And I don't mean just going to meetings, but actually starting work and partnering. Plan the work and work the plan. Show the Subcommittee results to anyone. Get them on board with the idea. Ask for support, political support, scientific support, monetary or in-kind support. Team up and get started. Russ Poppy, Executive Director of HCFCD, met with the Flood CAT team and a couple of you here in this building because a member of the CAT team asked them to come. Why hadn't you, as city leaders, asked for that meeting? If you're doing this, then why aren't your meetings, successes, failures, discussions mentioned in city council meetings or city updates? Does it go back to it's not your job? Tonight, I ask, if you don't think it's your job, do you think it is your job to make certain those whose job you think it is gets it done? Because no one's doing it. Consider it your job to protect your citizens, their homes and their neighborhoods, and you need to do this by taking the lead. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Lee Coggan?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm back to follow up to what I said last week about making sure you use sound engineering fundamentals in developing our drainage along Clear Creek. And that, you don't limit yourself because there's many opportunities we can take here with the city. I was a little disappointed that the tone last week took a tone of it's going to be expenditure for the city. Where I'd like to hear the discussion tonight is this is an investment for the city. Because, for example, in the city I grew up in, Rochester, Minnesota, they were faced the same situation 35 years ago in '78 when a flood hit them and they had to spend money, city's money, for a flood control project. Back then, about 30, 40 years ago, city share for that city was 35 million for a $118 million flood control project. As a result, lessons learned is that as they were developing the creek and watersheds and the retention ponds, the city council instituted what's called a riverfront committee, making sure it wasn't a concrete barrier. It was something that was useful and productive for the city, which in the long run was a great investment because they were nominated by the U.S. News and World Report as number-one city and top 10 in the following years. I have pictures, just a few pictures of what they did. I heard talk about park expenditures. It's an investment. It's no $100,000 park benches. It's bike paths, trails, bringing in businesses, meaning restaurants, candy shops, ice cream stands, where a family can walk down these trails along the river, enjoy the sights and the beautification and natural habitat of the area. The expenditures, I don't think what you're asking for, 41 million, is over and beyond. I think that's just the surface. I'm hearing from Sugar Land, they're voting on 90 million. Bond package, which around 50 million for that city's going to go towards drainage. Like I said, 40 years ago, the city I'm from, 35 million of their own investment. And they're still investing in their city, and they have not flooded since then. So it was a very sound investment. So please, tonight, as you talk about this bond issue, make it an investment, not expenditure for the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
And here's the picture.
Lillian Wilson?
Good evening. I am Lillian Wilson, and I'm really a novice at this. I apologize for not getting more involved in what the city has to do. It's quite interesting to watch the process. And I tend to stay involved in what you guys have to do. You do a lot of work. We've got to do our share, too. I think we all want the same thing. We want a community that's safe. We want a community that doesn't leave out neighborhoods that can't prosper because they always will flood and they will always turn over. And sad families will move away because they can't afford to repair and stay. We all want that. I know that. And I listened last week at the manner and how you approached the bonds. And that was a curious thing to me. You are in agreement on several of them. And actually, I thought this was a done deal, only to find out that it wasn't a done deal. So that's why I'm back. Some of you believe that we don't need to do anything because this is someone else's responsibility. And it's kind of akin to when I was growing up. We, as the children, had a responsibility to clean the kitchen before mother would cook the dinner. Well, if it didn't happen, she came in one day and she said, "The kitchen's not clean. I'm not cooking." And said, "Well, it's not my responsibility. It's Bill's. Bill was supposed to clean the kitchen, and he didn't do it." She said, "Not my concern. You're not eating." And she walked off, and we didn't eat that night. So we learned a valuable lesson, that we're all in this together if we want dinner. So, and I think we're all in this together, and we have to have the money, a sufficient amount of money, to be in the game, to get what we need done, to pair up with the organizations that can work with us. So please don't short it. I also heard people that were, I heard councilmen who thought they were kind of ready to discuss it. And I'm asking you to give the citizens a chance, give us a chance, to go to the citizens and say, "This is what we need to do. This is why you need to do it." I spoke to people this week, and actually, I got some interesting responses because I talked to the people who told me they would vote no. I said, "Why? Why would you vote no? You know. You saw Harvey." Most of them had seen Alicia. They'd been here long enough for that. And they said, "Well, I don't think I trust the city with that much money." That's not a good reflection on y'all. They said, "We don't believe they'll finish what they say they're going to do." And I didn't want to hear that. I also asked them, "Is the money an issue?" They said, "Oh, no. Money is not an issue. It's whether we believe you will be responsible with the money." And I think you can be responsible if you get the right amount of money. If you don't short it, I think you can be responsible if you use what you know. Rice University, I think most people think that's a very reputable school. You know what they're going to have said. You use that information. And then let us, those of us who have skin in the game, let us go talk to our neighbors. They don't vote it in, they don't vote it in. But give us the chance to go and convince them that this is going to be good for us in the long run. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lillian. Item five, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Approving a Contract with Galveston County for Election Services. You get a motion?
Second.
Can you repeat that?
Probably need to do, we need to call the election first and then do the resolution. Or, excuse me, then do the contract agreement approval.
I understand what you're saying, but I think there is going to be an election called. We just don't know what the propositions are. So I think it's probably okay to go in this order.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I got a motion and a second. This is basically to write a contract with Galveston County to, like we did in the May election, to run our election. We don't own the equipment anymore. It's cheaper for us to contract with the county. Anybody want to ask any questions about that? All in favor? Good. Now we have a resolution considering, a resolution, let me read it. Resolution TRR 2019-25, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Providing for the Administration of a Bond Election.
I'll make the motion.
Motion and a second. So we're doing a resolution and an ordinance along the same lines to call this bond election. Am I right?
Correct, Mayor. This was at the request of our bond attorney.
Okay. So we'll get into discussion during the ordinance discussion. So I think unless anybody wants to question the resolution, all in favor? Now for the ordinance. Ordinance Number T 2019-34, First and Final Reading of an Ordinance Calling a Bond Election on November 5, 2019. A motion and a second. Last time through, we went through these one proposition at a time and voted on each one because each one has a dollar amount associated with it.
Correct. The ordinance that's included in your backup material reflects the numbers that were voted on this past Monday, August 5. There have been no changes to those figures nor the bond language that was proposed. There was some question with respect to the drainage ballot language, whether or not we need to broaden that proposition to address the fact that this is seed money. This is partnership money. This isn't funding that the city of Friendswood can tackle the drainage improvements in totality with the figure given. We talked to our bond attorney, and they advised, again, adding some additional language to the ballot measure relative to partnerships. They simply stated that we need to include that in our informational material that's published following the calling of the election. Would you like?
Not in the ballot language because we're not, essentially, we're not allowed to put that in, is what our bond council is telling us. Okay. Have our work cut out for us to advertise and make everyone aware of exactly what this money is going to and what it's for. But having said that, can we go through each proposition?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Are we going to vote them separate, or are we going to vote them as one?
Let's vote them separately, if that's all right.
Can we just get a nodding of the heads rather than separate votes? I mean, it's in the ordinance as one package, but...
So we have that one final vote?
One final vote for the ordinance itself. Okay, understood. But we can discuss these separately, I think, is what he's telling me.
Sure.
All right. I'm looking for it in my backup material here.
We can. Jeff, can you switch to my computer? So this was, these are the slides that were presented last week relative to this bond election. The first item was the Public Works Facility. This is the Black Hawk Building that used to house the old food line back in the early '90s. Just to clarify, the intent currently, we're currently under contract. We have a lease-purchase agreement for this particular piece of property. We're still working with FEMA to finalize the acquisition of the property based upon the damages to the Deepwood facility that we sustained during Hurricane Harvey. These funds will not be spent on a leased building. We will have the building in our ownership before a penny is spent in renovations with respect to these funds. The $2 million is intended to renovate the facility so that we can operate it efficiently as a public works facility. That means at-grade garage bay doors so that we can operate a shop out of there. We have a lot of equipment that's still being operated out of both facilities simply because of the fact that we can't get large equipment in and out of it efficiently in order to work on it. This also entails making some modifications to better utilize the empty space that exists. We're going from a 20,000-square-foot facility at Deepwood, thereabouts, to one that's 63,000 square feet. So there's a lot of dead space in it. Some of it, a good chunk of it, we had applied for a grant with Harris County through their general land office, CDBG Disaster Recovery Funds, to utilize as shelter. So this $2 million is intended to renovate the facility for its optimal use. The cost of doing this ultimately is about $6 million, but we recommended phasing it so that we can reduce the bond propositions.
Okay. Is everybody okay with this? Thumbs up? All right.
Can I ask a general question? In our, you have all the information for these bonds, and then you actually have the ballot language.
Correct.
Where does the ballot language come from?
The ballot language comes from our bond attorney. I took an initial stab at drafting it based off previous ballot wording, and we sent it over to our bond attorney for review.
Anyone want to go to the next one?
Sure. The next one pertains to the Public Safety Building. The ballot language is the first bullet, not the subsequent bullets underneath there. It's for $9.1 million for three actual projects. One is the expansion of the Public Safety Building. The second one is the replacement of Fire Station 2. And the third one is the upgrade to the Fire Station 2 field, training fields. The latter two are located at Fire Station 2 right there off of 528 West Parkwood in front of the Harbor Church.
Okay. Anybody question about $9.1 million for this? Okay, next.
The next one is the Community Shelter, or the Community Center and slash Emergency Shelter. This is our old Activity Building that's currently at Morningside and Spreading Oaks. And about three years ago, we had Joiner Partnership, an architectural firm, do a feasibility study on this facility to upgrade the facility to serve more than just a senior program facility, but one that serves the community at large as well as provide some additional shelter space during emergencies. That Activity Building was heavily utilized during Hurricane Harvey, and it did not flood. This particular project, the Joiner Partnership recommended three years ago, and the Citizens Advisory Team recommended a dollar figure of $8.7 million. Joiner has since upped those numbers to $9 million. So in addition of $300,000 on that $8.7 million project based upon cost escalations and other factors that they saw. Robert Grifon Community Center.
I think we're all good with that one.
The Robert Grifon part?
No.
I'm joking.
No. God, no.
It's just something that's really needed. Yes, sir. The next item is related to transportation. Again, with, similar to the last slide, the first bullet is the one that's the ballot language itself. $7.6 million for the extension of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. Not the segment that's currently under design by Galveston County, but the segment that goes from FM 528 towards Pearland Parkway. It also includes the installation of sidewalks throughout the community, where we're currently lacking sidewalks, not in downtown, but in other parts of the community. And then the various transportation enhancements. These are intersection improvements at intersections such as Sunset and FM 528, at 528 and FM 518, 2351 and 518, so on and so forth. This $7.6, I will say the $4.5 intended for Friendswood Lakes or slash Friendswood Parkway is seed money. We're applying for an HGAC grant for their transportation improvement program. The $4.5 is intended to provide our share of those project costs.
Discussion on that. Next.
Parks. This is for a variety of parks, improvements throughout the community, and more particularly in Stevenson Park and Old City Park, additional parking lots to serve both facilities, and enhancements to the trail system at Stevenson Park that continues to wash away each year, as well as some upgrades to some of the restroom facilities. Renwick Park, the repl- Renwick Park, the replacement of their current concession and restroom facilities that exist out there. 1776 Park, this was an item as part of the citizens' advisory team. They asked for some seed money associated with the creation or at least the start of the Clear Creek Green Belt project. And then the city pool, this one did change from the citizens' advisory team going from $2.5 million to $4 million for the pool.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does that include a water park or just a new pool?
So it includes a new pool and some features that are water park related, such as a few slides as well as some splash fountains and stuff and a zero entry side for younger kids.
Discussion. Okay. Next.
Drainage. Lastly, this is the item that we spent most of the time last week discussing. It's for $41 million. The ballot language is on the screen before you. Again, this is seed money so that we can secure partnerships both at the state and federal levels to pursue improvements of to Clear Creek from Dixie Farm Road to West Bay Area Boulevard as the creek travels through the city of Friendswood.
Okay. Discussion. Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to make a couple of comments. You know, we heard several people tonight and they talked about us not doing anything. We are going to do a bond. We're going to do a bond here that it'll be the biggest bond in the history of the city regardless of the number we pick. And we also, and we don't want to forget this, is we are going to hire a person whose specific job is to administer all this. So we are, we are expending a lot of money for this and we do believe this is a problem that we have to solve, not tucking it by any means. This is, this is something that we want to do, we want to fix, we want to make our city better. I have a question. You know, last week when we discussed this, the original motion was for 34 million and then it was amended to 41. And I would like to ask those that amended it and then voted for it, and let me back up a little bit. We have always taken the stance that when we put a bond out to the citizens, we have to explain where the numbers came from. It's not just, you know, hey, we like this kind of money. We have to build it up from a certain vantage point. And I'd like to just, I'd like to get myself comfortable with that additional 7 million by understanding where that, where that comes from or how that builds up from the original 34. So we started with the Drainage Subcommittee doing 32. We took the bridges and stuff out. Mo went back and showed us how he had had a 30% contingency and how the amount of dirt was overestimated and all that. And in addition, we already know that, that the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District has already started on the works. So some of it's actually getting done for free for us. So I'd just like to hear the arguments of where that, you know, how we would explain that 7 million, how we came up. Like, you know, we've built up the 34 and how would we get to the 7 million? And I'd just like to hear that from those that voted for it, so.
First, let me put Mo on the spot because I think that 41 million number didn't really just materialize out of thin air. It was on a slide I think that you had generated with where you had 35 million was your number and tacking on 6 million for, I think, inflation, you came up with that number. Maybe that's the best place to start is your explanation of that number in your slide and then we can debate.
And I'd be happy to. The, what you have on the screen before you is the 34, almost 35 million that we discussed. And predominantly, this was generated from the work of the Drainage Subcommittee, removing the bridges and the de-snagging and then upping the partnership, the share for the local match from 18% on average to 25%. We also increased the surveying and engineering from 10% to 15% to get to the 34.8. We did talk on the subsequent slide about an additional 6 million for inflation if you were to add an inflationary cost on a 3% compounded annually for a period of 15 years, assuming that you tackled this in three windows. Going back to Steve Rocky's comments, though, Councilmember Rocky's comments, there is, there was cushions built into this original figure. And the Drainage District is out there today excavating thousands of loads of trucks of dirt. You'll pass 10 or 12 dump trucks at any given time at any part of our city that's already within the shelving that are included in this number. So I understand there's a concern with underfunding this or not funding this enough, but there were cushions built into that 34, 35 million dollars. I would gladly take 41. I would gladly take 50 ultimately. It's not for me to decide. It's going to be the voters of the city and the partners that we, partnerships that we fuse moving forward. It is, it is vital, though, that the Drainage District is there with us. It is vital that the Flood Control District is there with us. And that's another level of contingency. That's another level of cushion because the 25% should not be borne solely by the citizens of Friendswood.
Agreed. Any other comments? Want to discuss, Robert?
Well, I suppose that question was mainly directed towards me. And yes, I do recall the 35 million plus the increase of 6 million to 41 million. I also would like to point out that the engineering and surveying at 15% is an estimate of 10 million, which that's kind of in the original estimate of engineering. But in our original, when it said engineering and environmental impact studies, it did not really necessarily go for remediation for environmental impact. And I was at the meeting with Mr. Pope and you two, Mo, and what we were looking at was $1 million a mile for environmental remediation. Now, we've run into a problem on Cowards Creek behind Mr. Thompson's house where we tried to install riprap on a 1/4 slope and we've attempted to fix that three times. And now we're going to go back and cement that, that at a very substantial cost difference. Well, that's just one small mistake that we've made in the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District in trying to fix that one bend. And to tell you the truth, with the size job that we're looking at here, we're going to run into a lot of contingencies that were not necessarily looked at, at the Rice Study. We've all found that the Rice Study, when looked at by another engineering group, had some shortcomings that they wanted to address. And maybe that will come out in the wash a little bit later. But if I look at that, per Harris County Flood Control District, mediation at a mile, that's 10 miles, that's 10 million more dollars for remediation. I'm not talking about engineering and environmental impact studies, which your report really covered. And I'd like to also preface and state that it really would have been nice if the Subcommittee and the CAT teams could have come together and worked together in a way that no animosities were being brought up and they could have reconciled these numbers together so that all of us could make really good, informed decisions. But in addition to the $10 million that I'm talking about there, infrastructure, public work infrastructure that crosses our creek. We know that deep water has crossed the creek maybe two or three times before it gets to Black Hawk. We also know that there's pipelines that are crossing the creek. We also know that there's new lift stations that might need to be addressed while we're doing that. None of those dollars are included in our proposed estimates. And just at $12 million, our match is three. So I can easily add up $22 million in remediation environmental because we've already heard the concerns of the residents saying, don't go out there and cut those trees down. I don't know if this bond is going to pass. I really don't. If it does pass, they're going to need enough money to fix it. If it doesn't pass, we can emotionally step back and say, hey, we tried, we gave it our best shot and the citizens of the residents, residents of Friendswood have spoken. And I'll be glad to do either. But I do think that looking at just those two things and then adding up and going to 25%, just in case we need 25%, adds another $22 million, a difference of 40, 4.5 million. I really think we need to be closer to 48 million, to be, to be honest with you, based on the numbers that I'm coming up with. And I recognize the Subcommittee team did a great job and I recognize the CAT team did a great job. But I'm comfortable with 41 million. It's based on your inflation estimate on 35 million. I can go with 41 million, but I can easily see how we could get up to 47, 48 million dollars just like that. And that's just my contention and I hope, I hope the bond passes for everybody who flooded. One thing I did omit last time we spoke was when it comes to buyouts, there are several revenue sources that the residents of Friendswood can tack into. There's FEMA, Federal Emergency Management, there's all kinds, there's HUD, there's HGAC. If you are a flood victim and you qualify for FEMA or any other one of these revenue sources, then by God, please go qualify for it and get bought out. Because the $30 million that I'm comfortable with, with the Subcommittee for buyouts is only for those who do not qualify for that type of buyout. The residents of Friendswood should not go and bail out anybody on the creek that already qualifies for revenue sources somewhere else. So I feel good about the buyouts, both the CAT team and the Subcommittee team came up with about 60 properties. But we are going to do buyout avoidance. If there is a hog bend or some kind of a bend in, we can take that out and leave your home and not have to buy you out. That's what our city's going to do. If we can straighten out some of the serpentine rotations of the creek out there and not touch a house, that's what we're going to do. If we can go onto the Whitcomb property and cut that off of the back of that creek and everybody in Poly Ranch not be scratched and we don't have to spend $500,000 a house, that's what we're going to do. So there's a lot of things that are in both the CAT and the Subcommittee's reports that are good, but we do need to know that a study, which you mentioned right when we first started talking, upfront could be 15 or 20 million dollars in engineering studies, right? And we have $10 million up there. So we know that that's 20 million short on upfront engineering. So easily, we could go to 48 million. But, and like I said, I'm not saying I am for this or against it, but please use the numbers that, that really reflect what it's going to take to do the job. And that's my thought, Steve, and that's how I feel about it.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to have everybody, you know, in agreement with a number, really. In a perfect world, of course.
Yeah, so I just wanted to comment. You were the one that came up with the $41 million number at the last meeting and now you're telling us the 41 million number's not enough? Or are you happy with the 41 million number? I'm trying to get clear on where you stand on it.
I was questioning on whether or not I could come up with the numbers to justify 41 and I can easily come up with the numbers to justify 48. I'm happy with 41, but I could easily see 48 being a better number.
I want to basically echo what Robert said. I'd rather be safe than sorry in this situation. We've heard nothing but negative comments about being short money based on some past projects and I trust the city. We're going to have somebody managing this project if it goes through. And I, I just, I don't want to come back in a couple of years and ask for more money because we're short on money. And I believe in all the research we've done and based on what Mr. Giffon said here, I think we're in the right direction here. And if it did happen to be a couple of million more, again, I'd rather be safe than sorry because we don't know what that sorry could cost us down the road in property values and such.
Asking for too much could cause the voters to vote this down also. There's a limit. I, I'm sure there's a limit somewhere. So we, we need a number that we can all justify, that we can all explain. And 41 million seems to be the number. Steve, you want to say anything else about it? Sally, Trish, you guys?
I really wish that we knew exactly who our partners were going to be and what the engineering cost would be and trying to calculate something over the next 10 to 15 years, it's hard. It's very hard. And I respect every person that served on both committees and I, I really do know, I think Ms. Wilson, I think you were the one that said, everyone wants the same thing. Everyone's trying to get to the same thing, the same place. And what our mayor just said about what's the threshold, you know, you don't want to ask too much and you don't want to ask for too little. But I am one that thinks that if you show people what you're doing with the money and you need it more, you would get it if it was worth what. So I do believe that. And, and this would be unprecedented if we got $100 million from a partner. It would be $100 million more dollars than we have right now, two years after Harvey, right? So that is, you know, so I think, oh, all these numbers and good, smart people are arguing for all these different numbers. But the bottom line is, you know, what will, to me, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if it's 41 or 51. I don't care because we're only going to sell those bonds when we have a partner and we do something with them and we have and we're ready to go. But it's hard to figure out what that threshold will be and you want to do the best job. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard from a superintendent and a group of superintendents have gone together and had a bond council talk about the latest legislation. This might be more of a Mary Kay answer. So, and this might impact what I'm thinking. So after September 1, if a bond is called, you can't spend 10 to 15, or you can't take 10 to 15 years to spend the money. There's going to be a timeline, is what I've heard, a shorter, much shorter timeline when you pass a bond. Have you heard that?
I know that there is a new law effective- I know there is a new law effective September 1. I'm not familiar with the specifics like that. I could share it with you after the meeting. I have the legislative update in my office, but off the top of my head, I don't know the specifics. But I, I know that our bond councilman, Mr. Culver, is an expert in this area and I would totally rely on him.
Well, the reason I'm wondering is because we're calling it before September 1, so we would not be held to that if that's correct. But if it doesn't pass and we have to call another one, then it's got to be almost shovel, shovel-ready projects in order to meet the timeline is what, what I've been told. And I don't know if I'm correct or not, but that-
It would definitely need to be more refined beyond what we typically do. The ballot language itself would have to also list out the exact impact on a per-line item basis to a tax bill. So there would have to be far more scoping than what's been done to this extent.
We don't have to do that with this one?
We do not have to do that with this one.
Well, so I'd rather err on the side of, you know, caution of being able to get things done in case we are held to that standard after September 1.
Sally?
I would like to echo what some of my fellow councilmembers have said. I think there's a fine line of what we can obligate our citizens to. Friendswood always enjoys a wonderful financial rating. We've done a good job. We've been good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and thank you, Katina, for the great job that your group does. I want to be sure we have enough money such that we are ready to go if we find the partners that we're talking about. I think that's very important. At the same time, I don't want to put our city into a financial straits. I think Steve is absolutely right. I know the Drainage District is well on its way. The effort that's happening over in Imperial State, 1776, whatever you want to call that, is well down the road. So the efforts between 2051 and 528 are moving along very nicely. So it could be that some of the things that we're talking about here may be well on the way by the time this bond even passes. But I also know there's a lot more work to do. So I believe that great work was done by the Subcommittee. I think great work was done by the CAT Committee. I also agree, I wish they could have come together because it's made our job a little more difficult to figure out what is the right number. But the truth is, it's an educated guess at this point because we don't have partners identified yet. We do not know until we get into it if we're going to run into other stags along the way. So I feel like I can support 41. I feel like that that is probably as best a guesstimate as we can make at this point in time, so I would support that. And yes, I may have been influenced a little by the chart that showed the- And yes, I may have been influenced by the chart that showed 35 mil plus another 6 mil for 3% compounding over a 15-year time period. I totally admit that. But I wish we could just find the whole 200-plus million ourselves and just go ahead and take care of this. I wish we could, but we're not in a position to do that. So, I would support the 41 because I believe that that's not too much, and I hope that it's enough.
I'm supportive of the 41 number. I, now, I'll say something because it's eating at me a little bit. Some months, it's a little harder to sit up here and take the tongue lashings, you know, that get directed at us. You all have that responsibility, that right to come up and talk to us and tell us. But, you know, when you question the leadership of this council and whether or not we're doing the right thing, you know, this is the council that, back in June of 2018, decided to seat that Subcommittee to look at drainage, and then from that moved forward to a CAT Committee and asked citizens to make inputs on their ideas for a bond. And so, to kind of imply that we're just sitting back here on our, you know, keisters not doing anything, we've been doing a lot and all the time, you know, we are still working behind the scenes, a lot of meetings that you all know. We don't come up here and kind of grandstand about the meetings that we've held or the things that city staff has been doing, you know, throughout these months to meet with our partners and talk about how we're going to get there. A lot of this is being done, and I don't think we kind of deserve the tongue lashings that we get up here sometime, frankly. Now, we got a tough decision to make. It's going to be a tough call here, and you've heard my council members, the rest of the council, talk about this. It's tough. So, I'll say that I think 41 is a number that we can get voters to pass, and I think it supports the projects at the 25% level, and we will work our butts off like we have been doing to find those partners that they're going to work with us. And Mo and his staff does a great job. Hill's back here, you know, if you haven't met our new city engineer, Hill's back there in the background, back in the room. So, I'll get off my high horse there. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, contrary to Trish, I like lots of numbers. But I asked Robert to explain how he would explain the numbers, and I'm confident that I think he did a good job. No one up here has spent more time working on drainage, and no one up here wants this bond to pass more than I do. Cut to the punchline, I can support 41 million, okay? It's a lot of money, and whether it's 35 or 41 or 48, we still got to get the partners. Otherwise, we can't, we'll barely spend any of it because we can't do these projects alone. It's a huge number, and it's going to take a lot of work, and we've got a lot of people that we're going to have to bring in to do it. But you know what? He convinced me, so I'm comfortable with it. And several people said they wanted a bigger number, but nobody's proposed an amendment to it, so I presume we're not. We're voting on 41. Is that correct?
I'm very happy with that number. Anybody else want to say anything before we close the discussion and call the vote? I'm going to ask for the whole, the whole ordinance.
Yes, I mean, I would just like to echo your thoughts that anybody that thinks that your council doesn't care about flooding in Friendswood is just misinformed, right? So, I know personally, I pulled people out of nursing homes. I took high school students to muck out houses. So, I know what the community wants about flooding. I do. I understand that fully, that nobody in this community wants to see what happened in Hurricane Harvey again. Nobody. So, I think to direct those comments towards us like we don't care is misguided. So, I am okay with the $41 million number. You know, at the end of the day, though, we have a responsibility up here to manage city funds. That's what we do. We don't get paid to do it. We get elected to do it. So, it's our responsibility to look at every item where it comes time to spend money. I can say that five of the eight years I've been on city council, we've adopted the effective tax rate or a less-than-effective tax rate, which means your government spending out of this city hall has not increased. Five of the eight years I've been up there, up here. Even this year, with the proposed tax increase, it's 2% increase in growth. The population growth over the last year, last eight years, has been more than 2%. The track record that our city staff has and the councils that have been up here have is one of fiscal responsibility, one of not burdening its citizens with undue taxes. And I take that responsibility personally. I don't know how everybody else runs. I don't know how councils before that run, but I take it personal to not place an undue burden of taxes on the citizens. I love the bonds. I think that they're the truest form of government spending you can have because if you can rally the troops around your ideas and the citizens vote on it, and nobody can stand right there and tell us, "You raised our taxes too high because we didn't do it." So, the number that I agreed with Councilman Rocky on last time was based on the numbers that were presented, right? We're going to increase that by $6 million, $7 over what we talked about, but I'm okay with that. But I just want you to know that we care about spending your money. We care about coming and knocking on your door and asking for money. That's our responsibility. Any comments about it's not our responsibility to fix drainage on Clear Creek are just facts. That's not, that's not something that we say to spite people. That's not something that we say in passing to upset people. It's facts. That's what you have drainage districts for. So, I agree where we can partner, where we can help, we should in every way, shape, and form. So, I just want everyone to know, I appreciate everyone. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate you having the courage to stand before us on television with an open mic and criticize for what you think is important to you or to the citizens. You have that right, and I applaud you for that. But I just want you to know that I don't take lightly spending other people's money. And so, that's how I came to the number that I came to. So, if we want to agree to $41 million, I'm okay with $41 million. But I just want to say thank you to everybody that was involved and the same faces that come up and voiced their concerns about the numbers. I want to say thank you to y'all because of your concern for our community. I think that's why we're all up here, because it ain't for the pay.
Thanks, John. All right. We've got a motion in a second. By my calculations, we're talking about a $76.7 million bond package with six propositions in it. All in favor? All right. Item 8, communication from the mayor and council members. Anybody who have anything burning? Sally?
I just have one thing, and I apologize if we didn't mention this last Monday, but just this past Friday night, we had ribbon cutting for our pollinator garden in Stevenson Park, and I believe that two of our members of the KFB Board, Kay Corey and Susan Stevens, were honored specifically for that. And I think there's some benches over there, maybe with their names on them. So, I just wanted to say thank you again to keep Friendswood beautiful. I think they do an outstanding job here in town, and then a special congratulations to Kay and Susan.
Robert?
I did mention last week, but I didn't get the date right, on the Grand Casino Extravaganza at the Senior Activity Center. That'll be August the 16th from noon to 3:00. Please show up and have a great time. Lots of prizes. Thank you.
Steve?
I just wanted to mention that the Friendswood Library is having their first-ever gala. If I got this right, I think it's Friday, October 4. And if you're interested in going, the tickets are $100 a person. It's formal. It's a 1920s, roaring 20s style. There's going to be a well-known jazz guitarist playing and silent auctions. In fact, somebody's auctioning off, Mike, Mike is going to auction off dinner with the mayor, I guess. Is that right? You're one of the auction items. But anyway, it's the first gala. It's, all the money goes to supporting the Friends of the Library. If you're available that weekend, then it'd be nice and good to attend. Thank you.
One thing, I believe it was Mr. Ross that said it about keeping Friendswood beautiful. I don't know what we can do on that with sending the flyers, but I think as a community, we can continue to try to pick up the trash and keep this city beautiful because I think it is a beautiful city, and together, we can all keep trying to keep it that way, some way, shape, or form. So, let's keep passing on that word. I appreciate those comments you gave us earlier. Thanks.
Please do.
Second.
All in favor? We do that all right? Mary Kay, I didn't read consent agenda, but adjourned.